Good pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you take your role?
Trustee Nice.
President.
Trustee Tri.
Here.
Trustee Ferguson.
Present.
Trustee Charo.
Present.
Trustee Gerger.
Here.
Trustee Fletcher.
Here.
Bill's President Kinsey.
Present.
All right, we'll start with public announcements and ask that Circuit Clerk Joe Rush is here. We're gonna work a little bit out of order today and try to work on crowd management.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Joe Rush, County Circuit Clerk. And this is kind of a tough opening act. Congratulations, guys. Another state championship for Glenwood. I just want to tell you a little bit, introduce myself. I've been appointed to Circuit Clerk about a year ago and tell you a little bit about some of the things going on in the office. We didn't win a state championship, but hopefully we can tell you some of the things that we're doing. So, my background, I'm also a Glenwood graduate. My dad, I've lived in this community my whole life. My father Jim was the second head varsity basketball coach. My sister and I both graduated from Glenwood. My wife Dawn graduated from Glenwood. Both of my kids, my sister, all Glenwood graduates. So, way to go on your state championship. That's really impressive to me and again, big time Glenwood type of fan. Does anybody know what the Circuit Clerk's office does? Well, you don't count. So, our office keeps the court records. Anything that goes through a judge, whether it's civil, criminal, traffic, anything that involves going through the judge or courtroom, we keep all those records. So, again, pretty important that we do it. We've got a staff of about sixty-four people and that's what we do. My background's kind of interesting and how I landed in this position is that I spent the majority of my life working in law enforcement. So, I retired in two thousand eighteen from the Sandman County Sheriff's Office, where I primarily worked in investigations, investigating crimes. And then, my last four years, I served as West Bar's Chief Deputy. So, again, handling everything within the office. And don't hold this against me, I know you won't. I'm also an attorney. So, I practiced law as a prosecutor before I got into law enforcement. And then, for the last five years, I worked as a primary labor and employment attorney with Stratton, Moran, Reiger, Strawn, and Appleton. Again, handling a lot of different clients, but that's sort of my connection to the judiciary. And then, I was fortunate enough a year ago that I was appointed by the county board to serve as your Circuit Clerk. So, in the last year, that's what I'm here to report about. We've got a lot of things that kind of went on that I think are important that the public know. First of all, we put scanners in every courtroom. Doesn't sound like a big deal, but it is. So, prior to that, any victims of domestic violence that were going into order of protection, that order would be done. And at the end of the day, the whole docket, all of the cases would then be scanned or actually physically taken to the sheriff's office. So, this allows our clerks to do this in real time. The second the order is signed by a judge, it goes to the sheriff's office and be out on the street and served. So, again, just speeding up the time with which we can serve, the deputies can serve these and protect people that have been victims of domestic violence. We just got a court modernization grant. So, for two thousand twenty-four, we're gonna be able to install, bring the courtrooms up to the twenty-first century. We're putting in new technology, monitors. That way, juries can actually see in live time all these new, you know, in big screens, all the evidence that's being presented and the attorneys can actually use laptops in the courtroom. So, again, bringing in twenty-first century. And then, we also increased our, improved our disaster recovery. As we all know, living in central Illinois, it's pretty, it's pretty rough here sometimes as far as weather. So, we have entered into an agreement with a company called Connectria. So, all of our records in court will be kept live time on a cloud through this company. So, again, moving into the twenty-first century and keeping all of our records safe within the minutes. So, the last thing is we've really improved our relationship with law enforcement. Now, this community is so fortunate. I don't know if you realize this, but the Chatham Police Department is phenomenal. I mean, not only, there's the chief right there. And I'm just saying this to you either. I mean, look on the website. No, it's a great, it's a great department. I mean, not only outstanding at keeping the community safe, but I don't know another agency that is this involved in the community. Every time I come into Chatham or go to a store or restaurant, they're doing something. One time I was here, Scoop De Jure, what were you guys doing? An ice cream thing for youth? Went into the county market and these guys were raising money or giving food for needy families in the community. And that's, that's the kind of communication you want. So, I'm proud to say that we have an electronic citation system that we work with Chief Foley in Chatham. And again, proud to do that, really, really encouraging that. Right now, every agency in the county, with the exception of Illinois State Police and SPD, are using the digit ticket system. So, what that does, why does that, you know, nobody wants to get tickets, right? But if you do get a ticket, the driver's license scan information immediately goes into the system. It's downloaded to our office. So, it improves the accuracy and the speed with which we do this. So, again, that's just something we can do to help out. Love working with this community. And again, I'm really happy with what we're doing and some of the improvements we've made. But I don't know that you guys want to hear anymore about the Circuit Clerk's office. Five more minutes? That's really all I wanted to hit on. But thank you all very much. Any questions?
No, you need to address that as the board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any questions for Circuit Clerk Joe? Thank you for updating us on the office.
All right, thank you very much. Very much. Congrats, guys, yeah.
Are there any other public announcements? All right, hearing that, this is where I'm gonna change up our order a little bit. Prior to the recognition of Glenwood, because we have to give people the opportunity to deliver public comments, if anybody would like to give a public comment purely related to the Glenwood baseball state championship, we'll do that now and then we'll come back and get everything else that's before the board this evening. So, all right. So, with that, I'd like to go out of order and would entertain a motion from the board to print Resolution Fifty-Six Twenty-Four, recognizing the achievements of the Glenwood Middle School Boys' State Twenty-Eighty-Twenty-Four.
I made a motion.
I'll second.
Which we missed printing. So, I'll have to get you new ones. Motion in a second. So, this reads, "Whereas the members of the corporate authorities of the village in Chatham are pleased to congratulate the members of the Twenty-Twenty-Four Glenwood Middle School Baseball Team on the occasion of winning the Class Three-A IESA State Championship. Whereas the Glenwood Middle School Titans defeated Edwards of Liberty by a score of eight to five on October fourth, two thousand twenty-four, to claim back-to-back state titles. And the state title capped off a twenty-three-two-and-two season for the Glenwood Middle School Titans, marking the fourth IESA State Championship in school history and second in a row. And the hard-working and dedicated members of the Glenwood Middle School Baseball Team are Brody Doan, Cameron Murphy, Carson Washington, Tyce McGwin, Alex Ho, Ami Hale, Jase Meyer, Karen Settlemore, Ace Barnes, Kayden Woodrum, Carson Gibson, Harken Clutz, Abe Stark, Tanner Rath, Maverick Barth, Reagan Atten, Maddox Turner, Austin Gideon, and Cooper Appenzeller, led by Head Coach John Hummel and Assistant Coach Nino Matero. So therefore, be it resolved by the President and Board of Trustees of the Village of Chatham and Sandman County that we congratulate the members of the Glenwood Middle School Titan Baseball Team on the occasion of winning the Twenty-Twenty-Four Class Three-A IESA State Championships and wish them many more years of continued success." All those in favor? Gentlemen, congratulations on another fantastic season. Have you had the opposite of the resolution that we will get to you? As I started, I noticed a misprint, so we don't want to do that. But we will get them to Coach Hummel. And if you'd all please, will you take a picture with us? And especially bring up some giant trophies. Something that's just phenomenal. So, what you guys have accomplished in two years in a row, Coach, is incredible. So, congratulations again, guys. Everybody got them? Congratulations. All right, now we will return to public comments on other village business. So, if you would like to address the board on any of the items that we have listed on our agenda up for action tonight, including zoning invariances, this would be the time. So, anybody you'd like to address the board? Yes, sir.
Come up to the microphone. Want me all the way up there? You hear my voice pretty well.
Live, live on camera, so we're all sure.
Our agreement with the double J campground, the proposed new owner and I were just talking a little bit. Initially, the plan was, was to look at a building, re-zoning. I'm zone commercial, so I'm not really a problem with the zoning aspect of it. Mine was more the water issue, because water moves through their property, that property, through my property. And if they build the building where they were initially talking and put a big parking lot, it was gonna shift that water. It was gonna cause maybe some issues for me, especially moving through the campground. I've done it a long time. So, we were talking a little bit about it. It sounds like she may now pivot from where they were first looking at the building to a different spot. My only concern would be if it is approved to put a permit for the building in front where it's an issue that we're gonna need to look at a serious water, watershed issue. So, we had talked about detention versus retention ponds. Whoever ends up with that permitting side of it, we need to make sure that it's a joint communication then with me on that, because it does cause a serious problem for me with all that water that moves from basically the interstate all the way down. And that becomes more of my issue. That was kind of always been my first concern with this. It's only not, that wasn't my concern. My concern was water and where the building was gonna go. So, whether that becomes part of this issue right now or just that your understanding of it, so if it goes forward, it needs, it needs to have joint communication on that side of things. But it may not be an issue the way she's indicating. It may go to a different area. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the board?
Good evening. I'm Randy Stretch. I live in ninety-seven-six Old Indian Trail. I have a couple concerns. I mean, I don't really have a problem with the commercial offer by the problems by the, by the interstate. We get the water that comes off that also. It comes out in between our, our house and road and it washes out. We've had the rip-rap already once. The water is under control. I can't imagine if it's gonna get worse or better. But that's one of our concerns. And then, one of the others is a, is a, it's just a property owner out there. I mean, I don't have any problems with zoning up along the frontage road, but that whole property goes within a hundred yards of the harbor. So, that means is that whole, is a property gonna be commercial potentially? And I know they, they said they don't have any prop, any plan of doing anything more with it, but, you know, who knows what life brings, you know? And down the road, maybe they sell it, they sell their business and then somebody else comes in there and develops it. Then all of a sudden, I'm looking out my back window at a bunch of business, which, you know, when I bought the place, it was in the country and that's what I wanted. I wanted six acres or I was waiting for everybody in and I didn't have to deal with that. So, that's my two concerns. Like I said, as far as the zoning goes, I don't have a problem. It'd be nice if, if it could be split where the front part of the home front road was still zone commercial, like it should be. Not a problem at all. But the field in the back, it'd be nice if it could stay higher closure. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jason Schmidt, ninety-nine-hundred Old Indian Trail. So, I'm on the backside of the property. And I would, I agree with Randy. I don't have any issue with what, what he wants to do on the front side. A perfect road would be awesome. If you could, if you could keep it back the way it is in the front, you know, business. I understand that that needs to happen. So, I just, we're not gonna say anything. I'd kinda like to keep it. Feel like it's my business and I don't care. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next in the line of the presentation, we have Sigic is here to walk us through their audit chat log back. Annual engagement.
Thanks for having me. Appreciate the opportunity to work with the village. I'd like to thank Megan and Caleb for helping me on the process and assisting the staff as well. So, I think you all have sent a lot of copies of these, so I'll do a very brief overview. And if you have questions, I'd be happy to try and answer those. First large document is the annual conference and financial report. This is a overview of the basic financial reporting requirements. You submit this to the Government Financial Officers Association. So, there's an introductory section and statistical section that's in addition to the basic financial reporting requirements. Included in here is our audit opinion. It is an unmodified opinion based on our audit procedures. We believe this is my personal information presented. It's fairly presented. Just a couple of highlights that I wanted to go over here. One of the other things too, we also have a government audit standards opinion in here as well. That was required this year because you were trying to have a single audit. You had more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal expenditures. And so, once you meet that threshold, you have a single audit, which also requires a government audit standard audit opinion. No issues will be found during that single audit or the compliance issues surrounding the single audit. One of the things that I just wanted to point out, these financial statements do include the disaster expenditures that you've had during fiscal year twenty-four. Included in here is the FEMA grants as well that you received for the electric portion of those expenditures. So, included in your financial statements for the electric fund, you had a loss this year of almost half a million, well over half a million dollars that was primarily due to those FEMA or those disaster-related expenditures. There are some expenditures, expenditures in here regarding cleanup of, in the general fund, debris and things like that. You'll have a single audit again next year because the grant was, that was awarded after the end of fiscal year. It's related to those expenditures. So, that's just kind of a, a couple of the highlights. A couple of the other things I wanted to point out too was included in here is your police pension fund information. The back end of required supplementary information shows some historical data. Ten years of return information about your net pension liability for both your I R F and your police pension fund. Your I R F net pension liability went down from two point two million to one point four million. And your police pension, net pension liability went from five point three to four point seven, primarily due to market conditions. The investments, the return on investments were really good this year. So... Any questions on that? I'd be happy to answer.
Go ahead, I think. So, you ran in, because to the credit, I already know the answer to this, maybe say in public. You ran into no concerns or issues with even Caleb or Megan or our staff?
No, no issues. In fact, the other document, one of the other documents we have is a auditors communication to the board and some required communication included in here. There were no audit adjustments. We had a couple of past adjustments, seemingly passed on the review material. No findings this year. So, yeah, clean opinion, no problems or issues, nothing over.
The extent of, extent of control that you have to generally increase is when you do a single audit?
A single audit, yeah. So, a single audit report, we do have to use compliance testing for the major programs that we have. Your total expenditures were one point six million in federal expenditures approximately. About one point one of that was the FEMA related, which was considered a major program and tested. So, there's compliance requirements and some testing and insurance controls that we have to do for that single audit testing. No issues with that.
I'd like to point it out and thank these ladies again for their diligence through that whole thing, because even in the stress and the hustle of everything that we're doing, they wouldn't even let us get off track on making sure that we were in compliance with everything that was gonna have to be reviewed on a year later. So, they do a phenomenal job. So, thank you. Any other questions for the chairman? Excellent. If you would like more numbers, we're represented from on our back in Landon, who's here to discuss the actuarial report on the aforementioned police pension.
Nice to be out here with you all once again. Here to discuss the results of a couple actuarial reports we complete for you annually. The actuarial funding report recapsulates the village's recommended contribution into the police pension fund. Also, briefly touched on the F C seven, F C eight, which find its way into the audit. So, we'll start you off on page number two of our presentation, where we give you a look at your recommended contribution as well as funded status. These results are all gonna be as of the most recently completed fiscal year end, which was April thirty of two thousand twenty-four. So, that recommended contribution this year is seven hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Up in the top right there, you can see that's a difference of about fifty-two thousand for about seven point eight percent compared to the prior year. We're gonna do the details behind that. It is the moment. Towards the bottom of that same slide, you can see your funded percent is about seventy-two and a half percent as of April thirty. On the following slide number three, we've got the reconciliation of changes to our recommended contribution for the year. On top of expected changes we managed to pay each year, we also break out additional savings and losses that were observed this year due to items like salary increases compared to expectation, actuarial experience, which is changes to the demographics of the plan, as well as the impacts from items like investment returns and contribution experience. Following page four gives the breakdown of the pieces that make up our contribution. So, the employer normal cost represents the cost of active members who are creating an additional year of service. On top of that, amortization of unfunded liability designed to pay out your unfunded balance over the funding policy in place. Page number five provides a deeper look at the specific demographic changes that were observed this year. So, three newly hired numbers to go along with a couple terminations. Aside from that, all members maintain the same status as the previous year and the impacts of those items is broken out for your reference as well. On page six, we provide an age service breakdown for that active member population. And in that bottom right corner, we've got highlighted any active members who are early retirement eligible. Looks like we have three as of April thirty. Could leave active so that they might begin collecting a retirement benefit of their own. We then pair that analysis with the following slide, giving you your member counts in terms of the active and inactive member populations, as well as provide a projection of benefits over the short term. So, pairing that age service chart we just reviewed, knowing you got a couple of active members who could retire and start collecting a benefit. Combine that with the full increase that's going annually for the inactive members. Put those pieces together and we're projecting about a seventy-three percent increase in benefits paid over a five-year period, about a hundred and twenty-four percent over ten years. Page number eight provides a look at the asset value of the plan. At the bottom there, about eleven point nine million in planned assets. And over in the text box on the right, you can see strong returns from the market this year, almost nine and a half percent. Page number nine provides some risk management metrics we monitor over time. So, that top older point is telling you essentially how much money is expected to leave the plan versus how much money the plan expects to generate on its own. So, that four point three percent you see there, that's the percentage of the fund balance you're currently paying out in the form of annual benefit payments. We like to compare that to your expected return on investments assumption, which what we're currently utilizing is a six point two-five percent rate. So, because that's six and a quarter percent you're expecting to earn on your assets, exceeds the four point three percent you're expecting to pay out, that's a good sign, a sign of healthy plan going forward. Tells us if you do get that six and a quarter percent expected return on your investments any given year, your investment earnings would be enough not only to cover all the benefits for the year, but also stick around long-term and add additional value to your plan. And at the bottom there, we do provide sensitivity on the rate of return. Shows you how we have the, the contribution at various rates. Our last page for the funding report is page ten showing the alternative contribution. This represents our calculation using our assumptions, but it reflects the funding policy per Illinois State statute. So, that's targeting a ninety percent funding target by the year twenty forty, as opposed to our recommendation, which targets a hundred percent funding over a similar timeframe. That key difference, the ninety percent target versus a hundred percent is why we see this number coming in well below our recommendation. We touched on it in the beginning. We'll wrap up with the Gatsby reporting, starting on page eleven with a five-year look at the employer contribution history. On the far left there, you've got the employer contribution or the amounts the village paid into the fund. In the middle is the actuarially determined contribution or the amounts we expect to come in. On the far right, you get a ratio between the two. So, we look at that five-year average in the bottom right and you're getting right about a hundred percent into the fund. That's another good sign. Tells us the village is doing their part to put in the actuarially recommended amounts into the plan. And that five-year average is that gonna be the uses, the basis that we use to project future contributions into the plan, as you'll see on our final display for you this evening, the Gatsby solve as you test. This gives you an eighty-year look at the long-term health of the plan. And we're projecting that should the village continue to contribute based on actuarially recommended amounts, that projected benefit payments will be covered in full for the current population going forward. It's all good news from our perspective and that's everything that I had for you. But I think any questions on board?
So, we summarize it with what he said last, all good news. So, does anybody have any questions for Randy?
I have no questions about all good news.
I remember when I was on board, they would come and give these and we would all cringe because we were so far behind on keeping up with the trend and stuff. And, and they've done such a great job of catching us up and we above and beyond, I would say.
We're ahead of the, we're ahead of the state mandate. We're ahead of motorcycle. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. No old business. Item two under new business is resolution approving the purchase of a truck for the Streets Department. Have a motion to bring this to the floor?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Charo has made a motion, seconded by Trustee Tri. This is a twenty-twenty-four Dodge Ram pickup truck or equivalent. Little bit from Victory Land, about fifty thousand, seventy-four dollars. Any further discussion or questions? Any questions, Clerk?
Trustee Fletcher?
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson?
Yes.
Trustee Charo?
Yes.
Trustee Gerger?
Yes.
Trustee Nice?
Yes.
Trustee Tri?
Yes.
I have a three-time motion to bring the resolution approving and invoicing C D L P for maintenance and testing of the electric substation and relays. Trustee Fletcher made a motion, seconded by Trustee Gerger. This is for, we have, for those who aren't aware, we have an agreement with the City Springfield and C D L P and they do the maintenance work on our substation for us with this long-term agreement that's been in place. Doing the required maintenance for this year, we get a little bit higher than where the internal approval authority is. So, to approve these things that we have to do and do along with V H M G's recommendations to get done this year. That's why this is in front of you. So, the amount, forty thousand, two seventy-eight and eighty-three cents. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing done, Mr. Clerk?
Trustee Charo?
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher, yes. Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Tri.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Uh, items four and five, first thing is like, is a motion to combine these in a single vote because they go together?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Charles made a motion, signed by trustee Ferguson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And the reason we combine these is a little bit different than other zoning changes or variance requests we get. This is initial zoning on a parcel. Uh, therefore, it goes through the planner for the more additional zoning on a parcel, subject to a pre-annexation agreement. Uh, so, it goes through the planning commission instead of the zoning board, the field, where you typically see something like this. Uh, but the two items of zoning and variance are what's required to make the parcel grant its initial zoning with the requested cadence. Does that make sense, by the way?
Yes.
Perfect. So, the requests are to grant, uh, a zoning of a parcel of ninety-nine seventy-nine Palmero, um, currently P one, pre, and pre-urbanized to B two, uh, and grant a variance request to approve a variance for an accessory housing structure with a height of twenty feet. Um, you know that the attorney and the property owners are here. If you would like to, uh, say anything at this point in time or entertain any questions that the board may have.
If the board does not have any questions, then I don't have any statements.
This is an attorney that is well-trained. Public hearing was held by the planning commission on October third, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, planning commission issued their recommendations as unanimous approval, uh, for both the zoning and for the variance. Any other questions or discussion?
There weren't a few more people in the planning commission that were in opposition, but a good portion of them were here in the seat.
Look like you're forming something.
What exactly are we doing, I guess? Let me get some details of what's actually.
We're looking at the map. We're trying to figure out that, so, arm and hind, north of it, south of it.
Oh, there you go.
The current, the current parcel is under pre-annexation with village and channel. Now, currently continuous, therefore, it's just a pre-annexation. But by nature of that agreement, the jurisdiction falls to village and channel through our planning zoning rules, uh, and processes. So, like other unzoned property or initial zoning property around here, most things are recorded as P one, which is pre-organized, which we generally do ask for. Right? So, in order to develop the parcel, uh, into the intended uses, the owner's.
Slow down.
The owner's petition to have the initial zoning established for that parcel, uh, they requested B two, which is our general business district, right? Which in the easiest Landon terms is the lower impact of our two businesses open. So, it's not the one that, uh, is intended to have heading traffic in and out. It's more what they would kind of describe as a bearded business, kind of, so offices, dental offices, repair shops, things like that fall into channel. Okay?
Business, residence, business, was a residence, business, business.
This is along the frontage road.
Yep.
Just north of Double J, correct?
Yes.
So, just north.
South of the lot.
South of Double J.
Here we go.
So, that's, that's all, that's that whole property, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
It goes from here, here's the entrance, goes from here along here. Well, sorry, here, then it goes up. Just like that.
Okay.
Typical flying lot.
Just 'cause I don't know, can we change the zoning on the front half of it, not the back half, or is that not possible?
It is possible.
You have to request a.
Our system, you have to request the parcel to put the, the area that's on the property.
So, it, if.
So, divide it and then return it that way?
The thing that you, that you.
Has it, has it been divided once to create?
It has, these were sold off.
Which is a different process if it's been divided once prior.
The, the county requires a certain amount of distance in front of the property. And if you put another parcel that had a driveway that came back here and then this was sold later, that wouldn't need that requirement. So, I don't think the county would record that.
So, what kind of building are you planning moving on there? Yeah, that was my question.
Alex Reed. Uh, thanks for having us. They are leaving the house there. It's gonna be the office, it's very low-use, uh, environmental engineering firm. They have about three people there at one time. Uh, they do regular business hours, uh, so it's gonna be low-impact. They're also building a building to house their vehicles so they can be shut in there. And sometimes they'll have equipment and supplies dropped off that go inside the building. And we did submit a detailed sketch, uh, that the engineering firm put together for their plans.
And then building is the one that's gonna get the variance, the twenty feet, so it's stored there?
Yes, trustee.
It's gonna go right there in the middle?
Yeah, where, what, where are we given the building at?
The sketch provided for the building to go up a little bit in the front towards the front of the road and a little bit off to the north.
Okay.
Which was where the water issue is.
Okay.
Yeah, simply takes care of those, you're permitting and, um, construction with the village.
And you pretty much explored the issue of the water. I mean, do we have a fix for that possibly?
Yeah, they can, they can do, uh, whatever's necessary. They, they get it approved through the village and their engineer talks with village engineer and everything else.
They have to get the construction permit through us.
Exactly, I mean.
This is not gonna be a surprise later on that we have our issue.
That's correct, trustee. That's right.
And, and the neighbors out there pointed out that there is a water issue. And we tried to point out in the planning commission that they can't take water and put it off of their property any faster than it currently does if it's just soil or farmland. So, they're required to hold it back and release it at the same rate. So, they'll have to do some calculations and come up with a plan to make sure that they don't violate that. But they're not required to fix the overall problem of that there's flooding in that area out there. They can't, they, they can't be held to that. Does that feel tiled today? The apartment plant, is that tiled or not?
You talk to the partner.
It, there's. From the looks of their photography.
There's some sandbars in my yard. I'm guessing it's got some tile because there's a pond back behind. It's probably got tiled right now.
That was the creep back there, we had Double J.
Yeah, I was told there's a waterway that there's, that may have some tile on it.
No, by all means, down through the watershed into the lakes.
Right, it's all fried, he's like, that's right.
So, so the, the village, though, like our engineers will make recommendations, of course. If they don't follow it, there's still nothing the village can do. Well, it becomes.
You don't issue a building permit, I'm sure. They have to get approval from.
What they'll do is their engineers will draw up a solution and then Jim Michael will.
So, so we had that problem in our neighborhood and, and we were told it's a personal property matter. We would have to sue them and the village has told us you can't do anything and village engineers is just a recommendation. Correct, but after this has been issued, it's hard to tell if you have water issues prior to. And then we were told it's a personal thing and you have to sue them civilly, which the developer was okay with because then his insurance kicks in and, and defends him. And whereas we would have to sue him on our own. And they didn't follow the village recommendations. But they said that becomes a personal property issue and you have to sue and there's nothing the village can do.
Which was the True Green issue. The True Green has a pond and it's, you know, not just to speak out of turn here. It, the, the True Green supposedly, that pond was not done right, but nobody's made them fix it. So, that's what, that's what this trustee is indicating is if it's not done right, it becomes a fight with the turns and.
So, for instance.
Like every time you issue a building permit and you have your city engineer tell someone what to do, you're right, there's a possibility that someone may not follow it as in your own home. So, a builder may not build it the way they're supposed to. Um, I wish everyone did things the way they were supposed to, but that's not anything that we can control. Correct. We assume the owners are gonna do things the right way. Well. She had just indicated to me that they're now, because, uh, I think she said it was maybe gonna have to go up four feet to, you know, we'll say, uh, for the grading and all this other stuff. They may then need to, uh, scrap that area and put it behind. And that's what she indicated to me. Now, that's different than the original sketch what you guys had, but.
As far as the zoning is concerned, this is part of the village's comprehensive plan that provides for business along homeowners.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I think, you know, another thing is like we require a drainage, concrete ditches behind in the new subdivisions. But they put them in and then they jackhammer them off and cover them with dirt. We only require them to put them in and then the water issue comes.
Correct. That's the same as.
This.
Any building or any lot that if an owner chooses to care for their lot, it different than it can.
Correct.
Somehow that, that existed in.
Ag- agree. I'm just putting out this, so all trustees know that there can be issues, but typically for zoning, our comprehensive plan says it should be commercial.
Any further questions or discussion? Sir?
One vote, correct?
One vote.
Okay. Uh, trustee Charo.
I'm going to vote yes, because I'm gonna follow our comprehensive plan.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Tri.
Yes.
All right, have a motion to bring the consent agenda to the floor. Make the motion. Trustee Charles made a motion, signed by trustee Nice. Any discussion regarding awards over the minutes? There are none, Mr. Clark, would you take the roll?
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Tri.
Yes.
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Are there any additional public comments on any of the villages? There are none. Uh, next rule of board meeting is at six P M. Uh, I remember, well, there are no reason for a closed session. We all are going to wish Kristen, trustee Charo, a happy birthday tomorrow.
Happy birthday.
Where she'll be turning. Happy early birthday, trustee Charo.
Sorry.
Now, I would like to have a motion to adjourn. Trustee Tri has made a motion, signed by a birthday girl.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Stand in turn.